Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, guys, thank you all so much for coming out tonight to spend some time with us doing county business. For you commissioners, I would ask that you be cognizant of your phones and their interference with the mics. For those of you speakers that are coming to the mics specifically, if you have a two-way or a two-way app, I would ask that you either turn it off, disable it, or leave it at your seat because it does interfere with our audio. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the agenda? And do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda that we will need to take care of before we approve it? Can I get a resolution to approve the agenda as stated?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes of the May 21st meeting? Can I get a resolution to approve those minutes?
I make a motion, we approve the minutes for May the 21st.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the claims? And if so, could I get a motion to pay the bills?
I make a motion, we pay the bills for June 11th, 2019.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, healthcare authority, who's going to handle that? If you would introduce yourself to the public and tell us who you are.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm Hobbie Presley, and I'm with the law firm, we are the counsel for the healthcare authority, and been working with the authority on the proposed resolution regarding the sales tax. As you know, this is the last step in the process to confirm the collection of the sales tax. The legislature passed the act earlier this spring, and the act requires that the commission take the last step, which is to approve this resolution substituting this tax for the prior tax.
Okay. And our attorney has reviewed this proposed resolution. Normal meeting rules are that we would read this resolution into the minutes, but I'm going to ask the commission tonight, because of the length of the resolution, which is 10 pages, that we suspend the meeting rules, and I'd like to take a vote on that. Could I get a resolution to suspend the meeting rules to prevent the reading of the resolution?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. So we're going to suspend the rules. Everyone has a copy of the resolution. It has been reviewed by our attorney, and he is approval, we have his, excuse me, approval. So I'd like to, a resolution.
I make a resolution that we approve this, confirm the levy of special hospital tax.
Okay. We have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Just to be clear, Mr. Chairman, this is the same resolution we had passed through. Legislation is not a new levy or anything, it's the same thing, just to be clear for the public.
Fixing problems with the previous law.
Right.
Correct.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain due to possible personal involvement in this. I do want to say I'm 100% in favor of it, but I do need to abstain.
Okay. All right. All opposed? Motion carries, and note that Alan abstained. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, now we'll move into the public hearing of the grant. Matt, are you prepared to run that?
Yes.
We need a motion to open the public hearing.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we open the public hearing on the CDBG grant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, Matt, floor is yours.
Leave it open.
You're open, I don't need a report from your lady to read your resolution, either way.
Okay, I'm just going to read the resolution. It says, whereas the Chilton County Commission intends to apply to the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs, which is a DECA, for community development block grant, a CDBG funds made available through the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, and whereas the project requires grant preparation services, and if funded, will require program administration services, and the commission did solicit requests for proposals for program administration services in accordance with applicable procurement laws, rules, and regulations. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Chilton County Commission awards the contract for program administration to Grant Management LLC. Be it further resolved that the cost of the contract will not exceed percentages set by the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs Administration fee scale, and will be paid for with grant funds, approved on this 11th day of June 2019.
So you're offering that up as a resolution?
I am.
Could I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, the floor is open for discussion, and I would like to just call a couple of points. This has been advertised, we only received, the public meeting was advertised and the request for grant writers, and we had one grant writer that sent in a proposal to the commission, and that is who Matt is making the resolution tonight that we hire as our grant writer. Is there, are there any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Mr. Fundaburk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening. You've got a long agenda, it seems, so I'll be brief. I appreciate the invitation here this evening, thank you Commissioner Hardy, and I know most of you, all of you, I think, been here doing some work in this county previously. Some of you may recall our work with the hospital authority, so glad to see that action this evening. And we more recently completed the DHR facility. I'm Ken Fundaburk, I'm with Stiefel Corporation out of Montgomery, we're headquartered in St. Louis. We were purchased by Stiefel a few years ago, many of you knew us as merchant capital, but having been purchased by Stiefel, we're now the largest issuer of municipal debt in the country, the type of debt that counties, cities, water boards, hospital boards do. So we're pleased to be part of that group. I'll just hit some highlights this evening, I'm aware that you're going to discuss possible roadwork and maybe some debt associated with that. It sounds like maybe there's a work session coming up, or that sort of thing, in the future, perhaps I can come and visit again. I won't belabor, get too deep into bond issues this evening, I'll hit some high points for you that may help you align your thinking as you talk about this and go through a work session. Our business is changing a bit, by the way, the bond business. Many entities are considering hiring financial advisory services and then underwriting services, the actual sale of the bonds separately. Perhaps you'll want to learn more about that. Most are still done with underwriting and without a financial advisor, but I just wanted to mention that because some are starting to look at that. A word about fees, as you consider doing some debt, and you've mentioned bond debt, there are other kinds of debt, and I'll talk about that, but just a word about fees right up front, I believe in addressing that earlier rather than later. All fees in these bond deals are public, these are public bond deals that I work on and other firms like ours work on around the state. It's public information, it's published in every bond deal done, every city, every county, any of you could ask for a list of all deals done for the last year, two years, five years, all county deals, all city deals, of any parameters that you wanted to come up with. Maybe you would look at one of a similar size, or a similar term, or for a similar reason, road construction. We'd be happy to show you all of that, it's all public information. So there's a list of firms and the fees that they charge for the service, pretty easy, right? We're the most transparent business in, well, that I know of, really, and that works with public bodies in that way. So, be happy to show you that list, and then it's up to you, of course, to amongst yourselves decide, you know, what the service is worth and what you're willing to pay for that service. As I mentioned, we're the largest and the most active in the country, certainly there are others in the business, others that want to come talk to you about this road issue, I'm sure, and about other things, too. You're an active county right now, we're all aware of that. And other firms can do bond deals as well in this state, so I'm certainly aware of that. But you might want to look at fee information again before you get too deeply into this, I'd be happy to supply it to anyone that asks. Now, just some highlights about the kind of debt you might consider, it's already been mentioned, the pay-go program, some counties adopt a pay-go program, not a bad way to go, can't argue with that. It's an efficient use of money, you're not paying anyone interest, so can't give a lengthy argument against a pay-go program, except if you want to get some roads done a bit faster, to show some performance on roads, the condition of roads is dictating that you work a bit faster than a pay-go program would provide, you would want to consider some debt. So what I've got here tonight is a sheet to show you that contemplates that you use maybe a portion of your funds that are available for some debt, and then preserve the rest for a pay-go program as you go. First thing I would do is, you're considering, I think you would consider shorter-term debt because we're talking about roads, 10-year, 15-year. We've been talking to many counties about the new gas tax that's come out, we're doing a few deals now, thought we'd be doing more by now, but only a few so far, and we're in that 10- to 15-year range, and that's typically what we do, we don't like to see roads go longer than that, bond buyers don't like to see you go longer than that. It's short enough for banks to do. First thing I'd do if I were you is ask if your local banks want to do it. I'm a bond guy, I'm not here to promote banks, I don't make any, I don't make a living doing that, but you ought to do it, banks will do 10-year deals, fixed rate, and some will do 15. Question is, will they do it at a rate that competes with the bond market? So it's easy to do, you just find an underwriter you like, you trust, and you say, hey, give me the number today, in the market, what could you sell bonds for? Then you ask your local banks if they can match it or beat it, and if they can, do it with them. It's faster, it's cheaper, so I would say that to you. Second, you might want to consider a private placement. Sometimes we're able to beat local bank rates with private placement, what does that mean? It means one buyer takes the whole deal down. There are a few big buyers out in the country, not here in Alabama, that are doing private placement deals right now. Shorter term, 10, 15 years, good option to look at. Costs a little less to do it that way, we're not selling bonds to the public, it's easier for the attorneys to structure, easier to put together, so you'd want to investigate that option. And then finally, bonds, and what does that look like today? Well, I've already mentioned some are looking at a combination of financial advisor and underwriter services, where you take bids, most are still not doing that, they're selecting an underwriter, they're looking at the fees that are typically charged, they're deciding a fee that's appropriate, hiring somebody to go out and do it. Step's pretty simple, you know them, I'm sure, you go get rated from one of the national rating agencies, S&amp;P or Moody's, for example, and then you go out to the public. And there's plenty of appetite for bonds right now, there's more appetite for bonds than there are bonds for sale. So the market is great, rates are low, in fact, rates have dropped already this year, sort of unexpected, but have come down quite a bit. So I'll hand out these sheets now, and we can just, and look, I just took a stab at this, after your work session, you may have more concrete ideas about what monies you would want to direct to road funds, I just took a shot, and we're going with this real quickly, and I'll be out of your way, I'm trying to get them separated here. I've got about 14 items, so there's enough, I think there's two.
What's the lowest yearly bond you have?
I'm sorry?
What's the lowest year, like 5-year, 10-year, what's the lowest?
That we have?
Yes, sir.
Oh, gosh, we do 5-year deals usually. Much lower than that, the bank's going to do it.
Okay. So minimum of 5-year?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Because we typically beat commercial bank on a 5-year number, not always. And a few years ago, we didn't, because when the economy did what it did back in '08, '09, '10, banks got very aggressive, but, oh, I'm sorry, but we're still beating those numbers now. All right, so what I did here, under the blue column, you see the new gas tax money, this is an estimate, we looked at what your gas tax generation was, this is one-half of the new gas tax. You're all aware that under the state law, you can only pledge one-half. That was a contemplation, I suppose, by the, by your association that lobbied for the legislation to sort of have a portion of it be locked in as a pay-go program and a portion that you could do for debt. So we used one-half of the estimated gas tax amount that you would receive, we got these numbers from the association, perhaps they're a bit different than this, but that's where we got these numbers. You can see under that blue bar what it produces over 10 years, and what it produces over 15 years, that number's at the bottom, 3.6 and 5.1. The amounts above that, the total of those lines, the difference between what you see in the yellow and the amount above that, is the amount of interest paid. A word about that, where are the interest rates now? Well, we're at about 2.2 for 10-year, we're at about 2.5 for 15-year, that's pretty good money. I don't know what you earn on your deposits now, Mr. Chairman, I mentioned that to you earlier during the break, I think it's somewhere in the high ones, maybe approaching 2%, that you earn on cash, is that close?
No, sir, it's not.
Okay.
A little higher.
Okay, around 2%?
A little higher.
Okay, good for you, that's good. It's higher than I'm aware, then, it's going up, that's nice. So, if you consider that you're paying, say, 2.2 on your 10-year debt, and you're earning with your cash deposits, 2 or something excessive of 2, that's a pretty good trade.
3.0.
Wow. Well, you might need to go on the road with me to talk to some of these other counties out there. You just come on with me, we'll be a popular team.
Sorry, we'll keep you, Mr. Fundaburk, you can carry on.
All right, well, that's a pretty good rate, but you're getting my point.
Yeah.
Your earnings, your cash earnings are even exceeding the debt levels, so it sort of takes its thing out of some shorter-term debt. That's just a point I wanted to make. Now, under the red, you can see what that is, 1/3 of new sales tax rate, look, I may be way off on that number, there are some exclusions in the new bill, I didn't crank into my numbers, so forgive me if I'm off, but this just, again, gets your mind engaged about what you might consider, and you see under the 10-year and the 15-year what that produces, 11.7 and 16.2. We added the two together under the green, obviously, the combined columns, 15 and 1/2 million, 21 and 1/2 million, 10-year, 15-year, using one-half the gas tax, 1/3 the new sales tax. So, you know, that's just a pretty good compromise, right, that most of it then is available for other projects or pay-go or what have you. So it's kind of a conservative way to look at this, but it certainly jumpstarts a road program, right, when you've got, you know, 11 million, or 15 million, or 20 million, you know, to get moving pretty quickly. So, that's, that was our look at it, and as I say, you've got a long agenda, I'll stop. By the way, I'm assuming a general obligation here, and not just a pledge of gas tax. Most time we do road deals, in all the years I've been doing this, 30 years, we pledge gas tax, we just go sell gas tax bonds, not what I'm talking about here, talking about a GO deal, where you'd have a full faith credit to the county. Why? Because this tax fluctuates, gas tax is going to fluctuate, your new 1-cent tax is still to be seen with the exemptions in the new bill, the collections, that sort of thing. So I plugged in a GO number on this, rather than a revenue number, so that's a distinction. So anyway, those are just sort of some higher-level thoughts about bond deals and how you might consider approaching it. Questions?
All right, we're going probably want you to come back and talk to us more when we have more time, but one thing I would like for you to consider is, we have some existing debt, and it's short-term debt, but those bond payments that we're paying now is about 500,000 a year, and those are going to expire within the next, what, four years?
23.
23? So what we might look at is, if we refinance that current obligation into a new issue, I know we'll probably be going in with lower interest rates now than what we have in that, and if we obligated that 500,000 that we have now, incorporated it into paying off the existing debt and the new obligations, so kind of keep that in mind.
Okay.
There's 500,000 additional dollars a year that could be available toward debt service when you come back, and I'm not saying that, I'm just, I'm saying that that's out there, that we should consider what that money will get us.
So even more funds than the limited approach I took here, with half gas tax, third, so that's great. When was that deal originally done?
2005.
2005?
It was refinanced in '12, wasn't it, or am I wrong?
I think so. I think it, I think I remember looking, and the call provisions, I think, have you locked out on a refi right now? I probably had a 10-year call on it, so you probably can't hit it till 22, well, it pays out when?
One of them pays out in 21.
And 20 and one of them pays out in 23.
Yeah.
20 and 23, or 21 and 23.
Well, you're probably, are you locked out on your call?
I just know 23 is the last one.
Yeah.
And they were both borrowed at the same time, one against 7, one against the 4.
Probably your call provision got you hung up on it at the moment, but what we do in that instance is, we just fold in around, it matures in 23, then we step up in 23 on the, we wrap it, and so there's lots of ways to do it, but I didn't want to presume to that you might use money that way.
Chairman plays off March 21.
So, then you certainly could incorporate it into the new bill. Yes, but I didn't want to presume that that would be what you'd be doing with that money when it rolls off.
You know, we've got a lot of decisions to make as a commission, and there's different sides of this equation, the way. One is that the pays go and save your interest, and the other is the inflationary cost of paving roads. Since I've been on this commission in five years, the cost of paving roads has escalated almost 46%, and a 2% or 2.5% bond payment would in no way begin to rival a 48% increase in cost. So you pave at today's prices, or you gamble on tomorrow's prices, and those are things that we've got to decide whether we, how much of that we want to do. And the other thing that this commission has got to decide is, how much of that money are we willing, the new money, are we willing to pledge toward road projects? I think I can safely say this county will never get another sales tax in my lifetime, and there will be other needs that arise going forward, so we've got to be careful and not pledge all of our revenue upfront, because there will be additional needs.
Right, and I had a conversation earlier about this, too, and we agree, and that's why I took a limited, a limited pledge here, but we certainly can factor in that other debt that's rolling off, and it sounds like that's great news, you've got a lot of capacity to do roads and other things. But anyway, the market's very good right now, and I hope, I hope my comments were, I mean, look, I don't know that many bond guys are going to stand up here and tell you to go with the bank first, but on shorter-term debt, you ought to look at it, and I think we can beat the rate, or I wouldn't say it, but maybe we can't, I don't know.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We will be asking you back shortly.
It's a pleasure seeing you again.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we're on to the department reports, and I would ask that our county engineer lead off.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My first item of business is to request a resolution to accept Brandon Jones' operator his resignation effective 6/14 of 19.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And then my second item is to request permission to hire from the existing pool of applicants that was on file to fill our positions, the ad finished running on May 30th of 2019.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to request permission to then have Eric L. Holson back added to our county payroll.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
What's he going to do?
There's supposed to be an amendment added to that, he's a truck driver, or an attachment, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Truck driver.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? You want to wait, can you see it?
No.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like permission to add Alex Davison to our payroll as mechanic.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And I'd like permission to add Brandon Porter to our payroll as an operator.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And I'd like to get permission to reclassify James Johnson from a truck driver to an operator with the associated pay change. That was included as an attachment.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
We ran an ad for a summer helper, we usually get one because we lose our co-op students, and I had Mr. Jordan Jones apply as a summer helper, so I'd like permission to hire him for the rate of $10 an hour for the summer.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
No.
I'm going to abstain on this person because I know him.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Oh, I'm sorry.
All opposed? Motion carries, and note Alan abstain. Sorry, Tom.
That's, I'm sorry.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you. I think we're going to handle the tin little portion under you, so you want to do that now, or just wait till the end?
Again.
Go ahead and do it now.
For the tax collector's office, they requested a resolution to hire Emily McKinney Nelson as a temporary employee at the tag division to help cover the shortage due to a clerk on maternity leave. The effective date would be June 14, 2019, the rate shown in the attachment.
So moved.
Have a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, Derek Wright, our illustrious EMA director.
Yes, I'm Derek Wright, EMA director for Chilton County. The first thing on the business I want to do is, per the county policy on surplusing, I had to request to be able to surplus a pneumatic shelter. The shelter no longer is in use, it does not work, has a lot of holes in it, so to be able to remove that from the county's asset list, we have to surplus it first, and that's part of our policies, to have you guys approve that.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to surplus a pneumatic shelter, do I hear any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
All right, the second part is to request that the DHR facility be, I guess, presumed to give to the Chilton County Emergency Management Agency and the Sheriff's Department as a investigative facility and a facility for the Emergency Management Agency. Is that on your ears?
No, we delayed that till we had more time, we weren't going to ask for a...
Yeah, it's not on the agenda, so we can't...
It's not on the load now.
Nevermind, disregard.
All right, we're going to have, at some point, we're going to have some work sessions to discuss purposing that building, and at that point, we're going to... And at that point, we're gonna get you and the sheriff and, uh, probably Dan all to come and, and, and let's talk about that in a more informal session before we take action on it. We have multiple people that want it. Okay? Alright, sheriff, you're up. John Sharon, Chilton County Sheriff.
Good evening, gentlemen. Uh, just got a couple of different things here tonight. First, I'd like to request a resolution, uh, Deputy Warren Garris be reclassified as a night shift patrol supervisor. He'll be taking the place of Eric Smithman, which resigned last month.
So moved.
Second.
Any further, uh, discussion?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Uh, on, uh, Mr. Smithman, did he leave for another job?
Hmm, his is a little bit different situation. I mean, pay might have had something to do with it, but not necessarily everything on this, on this position here.
Just for the record, Mr. Chairman, I keep updating this and I speak with John about it. We've lost 28 officers in the last 19 months.
We're gonna have to address that issue.
Due to salary.
Yep, okay. Alright, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Second, I'd like to request a resolution, a budget amendment using the two checks from ACA Self-Liability Insurance Fund for vehicles. I want to increase the following line items.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to take the refund from the, uh, Workman's Comp Fund, I guess that is. Is that right?
Self-liability.
Oh, oh, the lib, I'm sorry. Self, self liability, I'm sorry. And move those into the, the stated line items. Um, the revenue would be 51,025.60 and jail overtime would be increased by 17,283. Sheriff's overtime would be increased by 28,742.60 and jail cleaning supplies would be increased by $5,000.
Where's it coming from?
Refunds from the self-insurance fund. You know, while we get the payouts, if, you know, we do our safety programs and all those kinds of things. Okay? All in favor?
Hold, hold, wait a minute. Uh, no, no.
This, this, this is different.